Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, October 19th. It is 9:00 a.m. It is my pleasure to call to order the Kent County Board of Commissioners Work Session. The first thing on the agenda is the call to order. The second item on the agenda is the Budget Work Session for the 2022 Proposed General Fund Budget. Al, would you like to start?
Yes. Well, good morning, everyone, and good morning again to a few of you. So today, we're going to continue budget season. So we're getting late in the season. Today, we will review the 2022 Proposed Budget. And today, our focus will be on, well, let me give a little bit of a history of where we've been so far. So the Finance and Physical Resources Committee set the 2022 Budget Guidelines on May 18. The majority of the October 1 fiscal year budgets were approved by the Board on September 9th. The CIP Project Plan was approved by the Finance Committee on September 21st. The Dedicated Milledge Tax Levees were adopted by the Board on September 23rd. The Proposed General Fund Budget was presented to the Board on October 5th. And today, we are going to continue the Proposed Budget Review with our key special revenue funds that have not yet been approved by the Board. And then after that, we'll have questions and discussion, although as we go through this, please feel free just to interrupt and ask a question. If that works better for you, we want to communicate well. But certainly, we'll also have a time when we're done for that. So obviously, our key special revenue funds, our Zoo, Museum, Milledge Fund, Senior Milledge, Veterans Milledge, Ready By Five, Lodging Excise Tax Fund, Correction Detention Milledge, and Special Project Fund. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Jeff, and he'll do the next part.
Well, good morning, everyone. So I'm going to start with the Special Milledge Funds. The first one's going to be the Zoo and Museum Milledge Fund, which is found on page 41 of your budget books, if you're following along. This fund accounts for the proceeds of a dedicated milledge levy to support operations related to the zoo and the museum. It's a 10-year milledge that was approved by the voters in 2016. If you're looking at the numbers, 2020 actuals was 10.72 million. Adopted last year is 11.4, and this year, we're asking for $11.8 million. Supported by 11.8 million in revenues, 11.4 million in taxes, and $400,000 in intergovernmental revenues. And the owner, the revenue is split equally between the zoo and the museum, and the owner of $100,000 house will pay 4261 in taxes to support this milledge.
Jeff, how long does this one go for?
It's a 10-year, I think if I read that right. The 10-year milledge was approved in August of 2016.
So it is 10 years?
Jeff, where does the intergovernmental revenue come from?
Several years ago, the state did away with personal property tax on certain properties, anything I think was under 40,000, I forget the number, but they replaced it with this special tax that we get every year. And I think general fund gets about 3.5 million roughly in this state revenue, yeah.
Anyone else? Commissioner Bukowski?
Do we charge any of these milledge funds, anything for our work?
Allocation?
Yeah, I mean, just the cost of collecting the taxes and...
The admin fee that the county collects, 1%, I believe it is.
We do?
It's not an internal support, it's not a cost allocation fee, but there's admin fees to taxes, that's what comes out of it, but there is no cost allocation, if that's your question.
No, well, I mean, any kind of, I know there's no cost allocation in the sense of to charge, but do we charge this tax, anything, before we send it in here?
Just the 1% administrative collection fee.
So it is 1% collection fee. All right, just, cool.
Okay, moving on to Senior Milledge Fund, page 42 of your budget books. This fund accounts for the proceeds of a dedicated milledge to plan, coordinate, evaluate, and provide services to persons 60 years of age or older. This was an eight-year milledge approved in August of 2014. This appropriation is 13.9 million, up from just over 13 million last year. This is supported by 13.4 million in revenue, 12.9 million from taxes, 400,000 from intergovernmental, and $520,000 in reserves. A programming proposal for '22 will be presented to the Board in the near future with a complete list of services. They also can be found on the Area Agency of Aging website, which the link is on the top of this slide. The owner of a home with a taxable value of 100,000 will pay 4842 towards this service in '22.
Any questions?
Moving on, Veterans Milledge Fund, this is on page 50 of your budget book. This fund, of course, accounts for the proceeds of a dedicated milledge to provide burial assistance, nonrecurring emergency financial assistance, and a contract for information about available veterans, services, and programs. This was an eight-year milledge approved in November of 2014, and we're asking for 1.6 million in appropriation this year, which is up or down from 2.8 million last year. This is supported by 1.3 million in revenue, 1.2 million from taxes, a small amount of intergovernmental, and then 300,000 in general fund support. Also, 47,000 reserves will be used to support this milledge this year. And the owner of a home with a taxable value, again, of 100,000, will pay $4.82 towards this service in 2022.
Yes, Commissioner Woodin?
Chair, I recall, I think it was last year, we had approved use of the veteran milledge dollars to support, I think it was a dental clinic day, where veterans, since I believe veterans' health care does not cover dental, doesn't cover dental. I'm wondering, well, certainly an important and valuable service, does that fit onto the emergency financial assistance side of the allowed uses? Or is there another, is the milledge worded, language worded in such a way to allow that to be, to allow those funds to be used in such a way?
I'm not 100% sure on that. Marvin or Al, are you?
It also could have been general fund, and I could be remembering wrong.
Correct, if there was some funding in there for that last year, don't have specifics on programming for the upcoming years, I don't know what's in there for the upcoming year. If you're interested in that, you can look it up.
Yeah, if only because I just wonder if, when we voted for that, I wondered if there was a way that we could leverage those dollars instead of having one day, but more of a partnership that could help create a more long-lasting service to fill that health gap? And if it, by looking at the languages you provided in the screen, if it requires it to be an emergency financial assistance, then such a measure may not be an eligible expense. But if we can get a little more information on how those funds are used...
Jenny may have some information for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can share that we did not just a one day, but we have a contract with the dental provider to refer veterans who need dental service on a, not just a one-time basis.
Okay.
But I will confirm with corporate counsel and others to make sure we're doing that service in alignment with the milledge.
Fantastic. Not that, again, not that it isn't a valuable service, I just was curious when I read that. Thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Yeah, I guess to take this opportunity to disclose another conflict of interest, because disability advocates entered into a contract in the spring of this year, so before, or after last year's budget was approved, to work with seniors and their caregivers so they could stay in their homes. So that contract is about $180,000. 120 of that is passed through in the sense of buying things for veterans or buying home modifications, things like that. So that's another conflict. In spite of that conflict, the question, you said this was approved in '14 and is an eight-year milledge? So are we going to study the need for renewal and what that renewal amount could be? Or how, when does that process occur? Because the renewal probably should happen soon.
Yeah, we are preparing information now to go through that process and would plan to bring that to the committees, standing committees in the Board very early in 2022 or late this year.
I need two different mics here.
Yes, sorry. Anyone else with questions?
The last one I believe I'm going to review is the Ready By Five Milledge Fund, is found on page 38 of your books. Ready By Five Milledge accounts for proceeds for the dedicated milledge to provide for programs that improve the health, school readiness, and well-being of children under five years old. The 2022 appropriation request is for $9.8 million, up from $8.4 million last year. Supported by $6.8 million in revenue, mostly by taxes, and then 3.1 million in reserves. And early on, the program wasn't set up for this when this milledge was first passed, so we're now dipping into reserves to spend down this milledge over time. First steps, Kent has a programming plan that will be, again, spending down the resources by 2024, and they're going to be sending in a proposal very soon. The owner of a home with $100,000 value will pay 2441 towards this milledge.
I'll turn it over to Marvin. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. So these revenue funds are status quo, right? So I like to summarize everything so I can understand it.
Next, we're going to look at the Lodging Excise Tax Fund, which can be found on page 39 of your budget document. This fund accounts for proceeds generated from transient tax, levied on hotel and other room rentals in Kent County. The 2022 appropriation request for this fund is $10.4 million, supported by $9.9 million in revenue, and $300,000 in general fund support, while maintaining a fund balance of just under $7 million. Also, the estimated revenues for this fund, or $9.8 million, comes from transient tax revenue. To the right, the hotel occupancy rate in Kent County for 2020 was less than 40%, and the expected rate for 2021 is expected to exceed 50%.
Looking better.
Looking better. For comparison purposes, the occupancy rate for 2019, or pre-COVID, was 66%.
Yes, Commissioner Woodin?
And what was the actual collection for this in 2019? I apologize, I don't have that number, but it was somewhere in the $12 million neighborhood.
Don't worry, it won't hold, $12 million neighborhood sounds good. It's right in that neighborhood, it may give or take a little.
Perfect.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. The, probably the most important part of this page, at least for me, is the footnote, because that's the amount that this fund owes the general fund. And as the footnote explains, you know, pre-pandemic, we were paying down, or this fund was paying down its debt to the general fund. And so, yeah, I mean, again, I don't want it for this year, but just that idea of a nice chart there, we like charts to show that we're just shy of 10 million bucks. Looks like if we hold budget, but I'm assuming this is a conservative estimate on 22 room or bed tax revenue, so hopefully, we don't break that $10 million mark that it owes the general fund. But anyways, just that being said, that's probably the most critical part of this page, because all the other funds are, I would untechnically call it money in, money out, after we take the 1%. But here, we've put significant general fund dollars in, again, on purpose, knew it was going to occur and knew it would pay us back. And then, as we like saying, along came COVID. So anyways, just that, better than a footnote. So for folks who might read this, it'll jump out appropriately at us.
I have a slide in just a moment here that'll highlight that, and your point is good. I mean, this is taking into account this bond issue when it was taken up, couldn't anticipate historic low interest rates, and you also couldn't assume that we'd have a pandemic in the middle of debt service payments before it matured. So there's a couple of things working against it. And originally, this, the cab bonds, they're loaded, the interest is loaded at the end, so that you're going to see in a moment, the cost of the debt service goes up about $300,000 every year.
And they're uncivable. That's probably the most important lesson learned here. Since we keep refinancing things and saving millions of dollars here, we can't refinance, and we keep paying millions of dollars.
Right.
Hey, Commissioner Legrand?
Thank you, Chair. I guess I had a similar reaction to the footnote, but being my first time through this process, I wonder if you can give me just a little bit more narrative. 2008, is that when we started this, the Lodging Excise Tax Fund? Was that, is that the beginning, or are we just looking at that seven-year window from 2008 to 2015? I mean, was it positive at any point, or have we always been chipping in from the beginning?
No, 2008 was the first year that we actually did a general fund transfer in to this fund to build up, to build up the fund balance. The goal here is to have a fund balance that is consistent with one year's debt service. We're a little shy of that now, but if we didn't have that fund balance when we got into the pandemic, we would have had to find funding elsewhere to make it whole. Fortunately, in that, we didn't have to do that, but if we did have to do it, fortunately, it's not necessarily bad times for the general fund. We probably could have found the resources, but if it was a double whammy, and we were in bad financial times with our local economy and the general fund, we might have had to cut deep in order to find the funding to pay the debt service. But the prudent management of this is to maintain a fund balance consistent with one year debt service, which we're trying to do, and that's what our plan calls for, so.
And Commissioner, it was established originally in 2001, when the DeVos Place project was done, and the bond was listed.
2001, okay. So, in other words, we've been, we did make some progress after 2015? Because 1.1 million did get paid back? Or not? Yes?
Look at this as a history of the first shoe being the Great Recession, and the other shoe dropped with COVID.
Okay.
Between those big events, and before that event, we're actually doing rather well.
Okay. That helps me a lot. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I'll have a slide on that just a moment, showing all the outstanding general fund transfers in or the advance. Okay, so, okay, so due to COVID, the COVID impact on hotel occupancy rates, the 2020 transient tax revenues were down significantly as compared to the adopted budget of $12.5 million. However, we've seen year-over-year increases in the occupancy rate since April of '21. Expect that trend to continue. Okay, so the estimate, the estimate doesn't show it, but we expect the revenues for 2021 to be closer to the $8.5 million budget than the 7.3 number on the screen. Included in the $10.4 million proposed budget is $134,000 for administration, $10,000 for festival contributions, $2 million for contributions to Experience Grand Rapids, and $8.3 million for debt service on DeVos Place bonds. The debt service for DeVos Place bonds grew from $8.3 million in 2022 to an estimated, is expected to grow to an estimated 11.1, not an estimated, but to $11.1 million in 2031, as seen on this table. For 2022, it's proposed that $300,000 be transferred in from the general fund to replace lost revenue and to meet future escalating debt payments.
Yes, Commissioner Woodin?
Thank you, Chair. Forgive me, maybe I just need to drink more coffee. Is this the outstanding debt to the general fund, or is that the outstanding debt on the bonds?
Bonds.
And so when are those...
These are the outstanding bond payments.
The outstanding bond payments themselves, okay. Sorry, I thought that was the balance, and I was just wondering, will this be the song that never ends? So remind me again when the bond is, probably, yeah. Can you remind me again when the bond is protected, be fully paid off?
2031.
Perfect. Again, I just need to drink more coffee, my apologies.
So the current outstanding general fund advance to this fund is just under $10 million. If current revenues meet current expenses in 2021 and/or 2022, no additional funds will be advanced from the general fund. Currently projecting, this fund will be self-sustaining again in 2024, if not before, hopefully, and at that time, the fund will begin to gradually reimburse the general fund. The absolute worst-case scenario for full reimbursement to the general fund is 2032.
Questions on this one?
Yes, Commissioner Bukowski?
I guess it's probably more for Al, you know, I mean, this is, we say 2031 like it's a long time in the future, and it's less than 10 years away. And the planning for, does this zero out in 2032 in the sense of the collection of this tax, or are there other projects that, that we as a county could invest in? I mean, again, yeah, so, or...
That's a good question.
I mean, DeVos Place was a pretty grand-scale project, so I'm not sure there will be something like that in the future of that size, but if nothing were to happen, no additional projects, then I presume that the milledge would cease, you know, after the debt's paid. But I, you know, obviously, we'd have to cross that bridge when we get to it, and I'm sure there will be people looking at potential projects and ideas for that.
Yes, Commissioner Morgan?
So Al, I mean, back in '15, when we started that sinking fund, that was probably a really good move at the time.
A really good move.
Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Woodin?
Just to verify, though, not just payment on these bonds, but also, they'd have to pay down the, the fund would have to repay their debts to the general fund, and that is enough of an eligible expense to ensure that when the bonds are paid off, this tax would not zero out if there wasn't another project, correct? Okay, thank you.
I suppose the clarification point is the lodging and excise tax doesn't end at 2031, right? It continues to be collected?
That's correct. It's 5% of the room rate is what's charged, and I would imagine 2031, that's 10 years from now, there's going to be some capital projects on our aging facilities that might be eligible for funding out of this fund as well, so.
Yes, Commissioner Legrand?
Just to really drive this into the ground, what's the taxing authority for the lodging and excise tax? Is that a county?
Transient tax, it's room rentals for hotel and other room rentals.
Yeah, I understand what it's collected on, but what's the, I mean, who's levying it? Is it the county? Is it the state? And we're collecting what happens in the county? Like who?
There's a specific state law that allows this tax to exist if it's approved.
Okay, great.
If there's enabling legislation specifically for the hotel motel tax, I think it used to be under the Cobohall tax or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
And then the CAA has money for improvements in other projects, right, Marvin?
They have a healthy fund balance as well, so who knows what's going to happen, but we can anticipate, we're going to see, we're going to see some capital projects of some sorts as the facilities age, and they may require a bond issue, and this would be an eligible source for funding potentially.
Anything else?
Okay, moving on, next we'll look at the Correction Intention Milledge Fund, which can be seen on page 43 of the budget document. This fund accounts for proceeds of a dedicated milledge levy to pay for operations and debt service on the Correction Intention Facilities. It's a 20-year milledge that was approved by the voters in August of 2008. 2022 appropriation request for this fund is $24.6 million, supported by $21.1 million in revenue, and $3.6 million in use of reserves, bringing the budgeted fund balance to $6.6 $22.6 million transfer out is made up of $18.8 million transfer to the general fund to support Correction Intention operations and facilities, a $3.8 million transfer to the debt service fund for Series 2016 and '19 bond issues.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yeah, the nice thing about that is it started include operations, right? So that helped us out quite a bit, a little history lesson for everybody. I'm turning into a history professor here.
Sure, the revenue for this fund, or $20.5 million comes from current property taxes. The owner of a home with a taxable value of $100,000 will pay $76.45 towards operation and debt service for the Correction Intention Facilities in 2022.
Commissioner Legrand?
I know it represents a very small amount, but the investment rents and royalties, what does that speak to exactly? Like, are we, are we contracting for anyone? Is that...
That's just a category name, it's all interest in this particular fund.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Anyone else?
Okay, next we'll look at the Special Project Fund on page 57. This project fund accounts for activities financed primarily by restricted grants or special revenue sources. The 2022 appropriation request is $12.7 million, supported by $11.4 million in revenue, $1.2 million in transfers in from the general fund, and $9,600 in reserves. Programs included in this proposed budget are listed here, highlighted by the funding source for each. Going across the page, you have general fund, non-general fund, reserves, and then the total budget. Public safety makes up $11.9 million of this budget, or 93.6%, and is supported by $1.1 million in general fund transfers in. More detailed list of the programs included in this fund can be seen on the Schedule of Uses also. of Uses also on page 33 of the budget document. And this proposed budget maintains existing programs and services.
Any questions? Oh, Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. Just confirming, I believe the township law program, that is mostly the additional contracted service, the road patrol line item, that would be in the, I guess, the general fund, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Legrand.
The school resource officers that, sorry, I'm trying to understand this, that's, we are paying for, this is money out, right?
Total budget for school resource officers is $1.6 million.
Right.
Supported by $483,000 in general fund contribution.
Okay, and the rest is coming from the millage?
Rest is coming from the school districts.
From school districts, okay, thank you. That's great, thanks. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Womack.
As we look at the total summation here for for our shares department, when we're looking at this here in 2021, are there any COVID-associated expenditures that might be expanded that may come down after we're out of this crisis? And at times, when we put money into it from other federal funds, is that eliminated from some of the stuff we're reading in our final reports?
I understand the question. So we did have, we did set aside some resources in the general fund in the contingency that we talked about to fund public safety, health, public health issues as they arise, as they relate to COVID, in the event that we don't have a budget plan for them.
Okay.
Jeff, you have some more details?
If I understood your question, last year, we did suspend the payments from the townships because township law really wasn't being provided for the schools and stuff like that. So we did supplement with some CARES dollars last year. Was that your question?
Yeah, and and do we see that in any of our final summations at the end of the year here, or?
Not in this proposed budget. No, this is back to normal.
Okay.
Schools are open.
Okay.
Action is normal, so.
Thanks a lot.
Questions on this fund?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, lastly, we'll look at the Life-to-Date Project Fund, which is also on page 58 of the budget document. The Life-to-Date Project Fund accounts for multi-year activities financed primarily by special revenue sources. The 2022 appropriation request is $317,000, supported by $156,000 in revenue, and $156,000 in general fund transfers in. Programs included in this proposed budget are listed here, highlighting the funding sources for each. Seen on the table in the in the lower right corner, 43% of this budget is for facilities management maintenance programs, 16.3% for ag preservation, 24.7% for childcare services, and 14% for parks maintenance programs. More detailed summary of the programs and services on page 34 of the budget document and Schedule of Uses, and the proposed budget maintains existing programs and services.
Any questions on this one?
Okay, well, looking forward, the Finance Committee is scheduled to act on the proposed budget on November 2nd. Public hearing on the budget is scheduled for November 4th, and the full board is scheduled to act on the budget at its meeting on November 18th. Any questions on the presented information or anything that hasn't been discussed?
Yes, Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, just curious about the Strategic Capital Fund. What page is that on?
CIP Fund.
No, the Strategic Capital.
It's not a fund, it's a project in the CIP Fund.
Oh, okay.
That's on 69 and 70. Facilities Management on page 70, just above the Facilities Management total, is $4.25 million in the Strategic Capital budget for proposed budget, and that's the same as the prior year.
Trying to formulate a question, that's why you smell the smoke. But out of this fund, this is like paying for, I mean, we just broke ground last week, North Kent, that's coming out of this fund, correct?
That's correct. And that's already, the budget is already is already set aside for those projects. This is for future capital projects that are on the radar.
Yeah, so on the radar, I mean, North Kent and then the Parks Building, those are.
Those are already done.
Already budgeted for.
Right.
This is separate funding for other potential capital projects, such as downtown facilities and the like that have been discussed.
They're they're already done in the sense of that money's not in this fund waiting to be transferred out? That money's already been transferred out? It's like that on page 69, it shows at the end of the year, we're going to have $48 million. And I'm just trying to figure out how much cash we have for capital projects of the large variety.
Yes, it does include those three big projects, that budget does. And it also, there's approximately 90 projects still open and still under, in progress, I should say. So that's why the fund balance is so large. We've got a lot of projects out there that are in progress and not completed. And plus, we've got about 15-plus million dollars in major projects in addition to the strategic capital.
All right, I'll work on formulating my question and get back to you.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I think you're asking, does that 4 million, this year's allocation to strategic capital, is it already spent on previous projects? And that is, the answer is no, this is building a strategic capital, capital account, basically, for future stuff. So all the money for those three projects is already accounted for elsewhere. Did that answer?
Meaning, it's it's not on this page.
Correct.
So this 48 million, in theory, well, it is in that 48 million.
But not on the 22 project list, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I mean, again, somewhere to, to, again, to just show, you know, nothing too complex, you know, back of the envelope, okay, this 48 million, we've got X earmarked for North Kent, X earmarked for Parks, and here's what we really have potentially for all these other projects? Like, you know, again, what's, you know, without asking if Al has a pretty cool spreadsheet, you know, that, not this Al, Al Jano, to to really know what are we watching? Because again, that's one of the things we do well, is take care of our capital assets and just making sure, you know, there there aren't any fun surprises, you know, for years from now, oh, my gosh, we own a second dam. Isn't that cool? I mean, sorry, I like to refer to the dam dam. But anyways, just what, what, what are we really looking at for capital ongoing? As best you, again, just, just so that we're not surprised, a little bit, if any of us are still around in after next year's election.
Provide a summary of that 48 million dollar number, including the existing big three projects we talked about, the balance of strategic capital, and the amount for all other projects in progress. We can break that down if that would help. Questions that if we, if there's a questions that come up later, they can be emailed to Cali between now and October 26th, submitted questions will be answered via a Q and A document before the meeting on November 2nd. Document, I'll, we'll provide an answer to your question.
And that'll be something we all get, right?
Something that the entire board will receive.
What is a what? What page is?
That's a flyover, and that's used for GIS. And so if you go onto Property Search, they say on Access Kent, to drill down to a property and you get an overhead aerial view of the, and that's accomplished via an ortho photo.
There you go.
Commissioner Legrand and I were looking at each other like, what is that?
Newbies over here. All right, we're wrapping up our final work session, where no decisions are made. This is all information gathering as we approach our Finance and Physical Resource Committee on 11/2, where we'll look at this and, at that point, deliberate it as a potential vote for approval or not. So are there any other questions on the budget for the work session? All right, thank you, gentlemen. At this point, I will open up public comment. Is there any public that would like to address us at the work session today? Seeing none, I will close public comment. That will bring us to Commissioner miscellaneous. Do we have any Commissioner miscellaneous this morning at the work session? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned.